All right, welcome everyone to the Tuesday, August 5th, 2025 Liberty Lake City Council meeting. Both here in person at City Hall as well as live online. We welcome those of you who are participating by either method. This is our regular session. We will take roll call here in just a couple of minutes. We will start with our invocation, hopefully given by Councilmember Spencer, if that's okay, all right? Since we're doing this on back-to-back nights, followed by our pledge allegiance, please lines.
Our Father in heaven, we are grateful unto thee this evening for the chance that we have to gather together as a city council and citizens and we're grateful for the beautiful weather that we've been experiencing and we're thankful for this chance that we have to meet together to discuss the business of the city and pray for thy blessing to be upon us that we can be wise in our stewardship here and that we can do right by the citizens with the business that we're transacting. We are grateful for all of the many blessings that we enjoy and we ask for these blessings and favors in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will call to order now with a roll call. Is Councilmember Kurtz online?
No, I don't think Annie will be here with us.
Okay, all right, so we'll start roll call and then we'll excuse the council members. Councilmember Van Orman.
Here.
Councilmember Cargill's here, Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
And Councilmember Kennedy.
Present.
All right, can we get a motion to excuse the mayor who was at National Night Out activities as well as Councilmember Ball and Councilmember Spencer, excuse me, I'm sorry, Councilmember Kurtz.
Move, move, so moved.
Okay, and.
Seconded.
All right, moved by Councilmember Spencer and second by Councilmember Van Orman. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, passes five zero, thank you all. We are now up to agenda approval. Are there any amendments to the agenda that anyone would like to make? Yes, Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I would like to have ten D move to general business.
All right, ten D move to general business. Do we have a second? I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, passes five zero, thank you. Any other amendments?
I would like to see that the time of the meeting is scheduled to six to nine PM per our procedures, please.
Sixteen, thank you.
I'd like to see the end time of meetings for all meetings stated in the agenda.
It was not listed on the agenda, so we will make that amendment. I'll make the second to that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, passes five zero, anything else? All right, if we can make a motion now, I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have an agenda, five zero, thank you all. We are now up to citizen comments. For those of you here in person, if you filled out one of these sheets, please make sure you give it to Rochelle, our city clerk, and everyone who is going to testify, you'll need, you'll have three minutes. Please tell us your name if you live in the city and this is not an opportunity for us to do any back and forth or conversations. We're just here to listen to what you have to say, so three minutes and we will start with Tom Solberg. And while Tom is making his way to the podium, anyone online who wishes to testify, please raise your hand.
Neighbor, staff and elected Tom Solberg, I address you tonight as a member of the Planning Commission and the Climate Policy Advisory Team. Our planning staff, Lisa, Amy, Lance and others. Our city council approved parametrics consultants Beth Miller, John Phillips and Matty Cheeks. Our planning commission, Joe Mann, Charlie Jenks, DG Garcia, Jim Bumker, Phil Foyer, Dale Robbins, Gene Hushel, Troy Mullenix and our Climate Policy Advisory Group, Mark Sullivan, Scott Gerard, Jorn Rasmussen, Krista Larson and the AP Environmental Science class that you honored last month have all put in over a year and hundreds of hours working to fulfill the requirements of the 2023 state mandated law requiring that greenhouse gas and climate resiliency elements be added to our 2046 comp plan. We have met at least two times a month and during the Climate Policy Advisory Team times, three to four times a months, a month. You all have been welcome to attend in person or via Zoom. Every step along the path, the city council has been given timely updates. Not once do I recall seeing any of the city council attend any of our public meetings, nor were we given much if any input or feedback, other than this opinion from Chris Cargill's City Council Facebook page on July 22nd. Tonight, the council approved moving forward with a state mandated climate policy that sets a stage for costly, damaging and ineffective laws. The goal allegedly is to reduce carbon emissions, but we could have made it better and more transparent to the citizens who will ultimately pay the bill and suffer the consequences. The tentacles of what was approved tonight will ultimately be felt for decades to come. This negative comment is also aimed at the five city council members who voted only to approve submitting the draft recommendations to the Department of Commerce for review. We are doing the advisory work of the comp plan following the law. You took an oath to support the laws of the state of Washington. Tonight, you will have the opportunity again to workshop the climate resiliency goals and policies of our 2046 comp plan. While we look forward to constructive input and feedback, Councilmember Cargill's derogatory Facebook post was neither, nor did it help our citizens understand what we are doing and why. My sincere thanks to the five of you who voted to support the recommendations that the staff, the Planning Commission, Climate Policy Advisory Team and our Parametrics Consultant Team have worked on to comply with the law and to best serve the interests of the community we love and serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Are there any additional comments in chambers? Okay, hearing none, any online? Okay, just a reminder for those of you here in person and online, you'll have the opportunity to give public comments again at the end of the meeting when we get to item number 12 in the agenda. With that, we do not have any announcements, proclamations or special presentations. We will move on to reports and inquiries and we'll start with the city council. Any reports? Yes. Yes, you'll, you can give it to our city clerk.
Till the end of the meeting, not the next meeting.
We'll start with city council reports and inquiries. Yes, Councilmember Dunn.
Yeah, you probably read from news that Spokane Transit Authority has appointed Carl Otterstrom their next CEO. Carl is a candidate is an excellent choice. He was, I was on the the four, four man initial committee in the view. Carl is a longtime employee and I'm going to say just engaged and passionate about transit and his knowledge and his actions. I think I'm really excited about what's coming up with this agency, so it's gonna be great thing.
Okay, any additional reports or inquiries from the council?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Van Orman.
I have two. Let everybody know what the food bank's been doing. And of course, we've got food banks located all the way through Spokane County. Ours is the third largest and over the last year, not only have we served 3,000 people per month, but also a total poundage has been given out of 283,017. Now of that, we have Yolks Liberty Lake, Safeway Liberty Lake, Safeway Trent, Safeway 32nd, Fred Meyers and Starbucks giving a lot of that food for the people that need it, which is amazing. Didn't realize all that until I compiled all that because I'm the administrator for the food bank. And also Lions Club has the upcoming for Valley Fest that is on September 19th, 20th and 21st. They have the Valley Fest Parade. The bed races for the Lions Club will be right prior to the parade, so I'm passing these all out, hoping that you guys might want to put together a team. It helps out Sleep in Heavenly Peace, which is a nonprofit agency that we have been doing collection for twin sheets, beds and blankets and pillows. So they give away beds to kids that don't have any, so we're hoping that the whole community helps out.
Councilmember Spencer.
Thank you. Just wanted to briefly mention and give kudos to staff and volunteers for a successful Barefoot in the Park. You couldn't have asked for better weather, lots of, lots of amazing activities going on. My kids thoroughly enjoyed it and, and I enjoyed getting dunked a few times. Most everybody else didn't have the privilege of walking around the park, you know, a little bit damp, you know, to stay cool, so that was actually a benefit. So thanks again for, for the city for putting that on.
I'll just follow up with Councilmember Spencer and say yes, thanks, thanks again to city staff for Barefoot in the Park. I also was in the Dunk Tank and I'm hoping, I don't know the exact numbers, maybe Mark knows that we raised a lot of money all day long for the Girl Scouts at the Dunk Tank. I know it, Councilmember Spencer was there, Mark was there. Deputy Chief was there, who else?
The mayor was there, the football coach at Ridgeline, some other administrators at Ridgeline, so there were quite a few.
So thank you, everyone who came to the event and especially donated to the Girl Scouts. It was a great cause. Anybody else with council comments? All right, the mayor's not here as we mentioned, so we will move on to city administrator report.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And for the record, we're still waiting for the final tally of the donations to the Girl Scouts from the Dunk Tank and we'll get you that number as soon as we have it. A couple of reminders for things that are going on and upcoming. Today is election day. It is just after six, so if you haven't filled out your ballot, you still have a couple of hours to get it into a Dropbox. The deadline for that is eight PM and there is a Dropbox at the Liberty Lake Municipal Library. A reminder for Thursday, this, this Thursday, August the 7th at the library, starting at 5:30 PM will be the open house to discuss the options that our partners at BCRA developed and there will be staff and reps from BCRA there to answer any questions that you may have. So come out, spend some time with us, ask any questions that you may have, see the materials that they've presented with layouts, site plans, parking schemes, all of that other stuff. We'd be, we're encouraged to see out there on the 7th. A little bit downstream of that, Wednesday, August the 20th is our next Shakespeare in the Park, which takes place at Pavilion Park and that starts at five PM. This is, I'm not sure what number this is for them, but this is an annual tradition or it has become that and so a popular event and if you have an interest in that, Wednesday, August the 20th at five PM Pavilion Park and then finally kind of our capstone of summer events is the Lud Kramer Memorial Concert with the Spokane Symphony and that is going to be Saturday, August the 30th, again at Pavilion Park and that starts at six PM. Any questions about those reminders before we move on? All right, we've got a opportunity to do some employee recognition this evening and I don't know, Evan, if, if Jen Camp is on, online. Okay. So what I'd like to do, everybody here knows Jen, Jen is a longtime city employee. She's our Parks and Recreation Director. I'm not sure where in the rankings of tenure she falls, but it's on the high end. She's been, she's one of our most tenured employees. She had the opportunity this year to go through the High Performing Leadership Academy through the Professional Development Academy and this was a 12-week course in total. It was broken up into kind of four modules and those things entailed leadership mindset and positive engagement, leading effective change, communication and collaboration and leading high performing teams. And so I'm gonna let Jen kind of tell you what that was like to go through, but before I turn it over to her, I just want to say, this is not one of the courses that you sign up for, pay the fee and then show up at the end and get a certificate. This is active participation. They put the students in cohorts and one of the responsibilities was to lead one of the cohort discussions and so she had an opportunity to do that and the goal here is to bring some of this back into our organization and then spread it throughout the organization in a train the trainer kind of, of mode. And then beyond this year, the goal is to put an employee of the city through this course every year going forward. And so I'd just like now to formally recognize Jen, congratulate her on the hard work that she put in to graduate from this course and ask her to make some comments about what she took from it and what she's looking forward to implementing from it. So Jen, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mark. This was an incredibly intensive training, something I've never experienced before and I think in the beginning, it was a little bit overwhelming because it was almost like a college course, multiple hours per week for 12 weeks. Didn't really know what I signed up for, but as I got into it, it was, it was kind of headed up by General Colin Powell and he was incredibly inspiring, even though he's, he's now deceased and I learned a lot from him and all of the other leaders in this training. I, I think that what I took from all of this 12 weeks of training was the self-reflection and the recognition of looking, looking at what I'm doing currently, looking at who I am currently as a leader in the city of Liberty Lake and how can I, how can I sort of soak that in, interpret that and then, and then expel that to my staff and my peers and everybody around me. It was amazing. I loved it. I would highly recommend it to anyone in, in the city or outside the city. It was awesome. It was eye-opening and I love leadership. Oh my gosh, I love leadership more than anything. And if I can take any sliver, which I feel like I had multiple slivers and exude that onto my staff, then I feel like I am doing something right and, and I have several of my staff who are hungry leaders. They're hungry leaders. They're up and coming and I think that I can share tidbits of those little teasers that encourage leadership. And if, if that's all I do in the city, that, then I'm a happy leader. So thank you, Mark, for steering me to this training. It was amazing. It was absolutely amazing.
Well, as you can tell, Jen was the ideal candidate for this first go-round because she soaked this stuff in like a sponge. And this is an example, not the only example, but of capacity building that we have planned and this kind of fits into our public service excellence strategic priority. So you'll be hearing more about all of our professional development efforts as we move forward. Any questions about that before we move on to the next item?
Mark, I just want to make a addition there.
Yeah.
Jen has been day one. When we hired her, she's been exemplary as far as a leader. She's approaching 15 years, if not 15, it's probably 16. I believe it was 2011 that she was hired. And still remember her walking through the door and that incredible interview? Yes, we are very lucky to have her and so is her staff.
Absolutely.
All right, I'd say something, I may also on Jen's behalf. I've been coming to council meetings for many, many years and also got to know some of the staffs who moved along. I can remember one of the first times memory I have of Jen and she might have had other responsibility at the time, but she was out mowing the grass. And I find interesting is that through training and promotion from within of good quality people, Jen is a prime example, and I hope I'm embarrassing you to the end, Jen, is a prime example of somebody who got on that tractor, mowed the lawn, did what was necessary to do, put the effort in, was able to advance through to where she has the position she has now. She was not hired for that position she has now. She was hired for something else, but through hard work, which I think the opportunity for all of our employees and coworkers have, I think she's a shining example of what our other employees can look at and say, I can also achieve that because the opportunity that Liberty Lake provides. Well done, Jen. And I hope I've embarrassed you grossly.
So with that, we will transition to the next item, which is the quarter two financial report and Kyle is going to bring that to you this evening. So Kyle, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Mark. We all have a printout on, on the dais here. Some of these charts are a little hard to make out on the screen, but we'll go through each of these, give you guys a hit some of the highlights on the first two quarters of 2025 as it relates to revenues and expenses. Next slide, please. So as always, we start out with property tax. That's kind of one of our cornerstone revenues in the general fund. The 2025 total general levy as set by the county is 3.16 million. We collect in the general revenue on an annual basis, 2.65 in 2025. It is worth noting, the second line here, the TIF contribution. That is the city's contribution to the TIF and LIFT program in conjunction with the county Spokane Valley Fire. So collectively, the TIF generates about 1.6 and growing pretty fast. And so we are in discussions, we, we had the discussion this spring about renewing the TIF for an additional five years with the hope that we sunset this thing in 2034 in conjunction with the LIFT. And so we are seeking concurrence and consensus with Spokane Valley Fire and the county to continue this, if not through 2030 and potentially through 2034. And I will bring an update back to you guys once those discussions have, have been completed. Some of those discussions have involved a potential cap in contributions and so we are contributing just over half a million. The goal was to generate a million collectively among the three and so that gives you kind of an idea of how successful this program has been. Because the, the tax base in that area has grown so substantially that we've far outpaced that and so I've had a couple of discussions with the Chief Soto. We've had preliminary discussions with Commissioner Cuny and Scott Simmons with the county. And it sounds like there is preliminary consensus, I don't want to speak too soon, about introducing a potential cap that will bring that back to you guys for review and potential adoption. Probably later on this fall, so. But with that, I, that was just a, a kind of a quick tangent there on that. To date through June, we've collected 1.47 million. So obviously a big chunk of that happened in, in May. We'll get another big chunk again in November and December to get us to that 2.65. So obviously no, no concerns with the, with the revenue for a general fund. Next slide, please. And then, please stop me. If you have any questions, just interrupt me, so. Sales and use taxes is our single biggest revenue across our entire portfolio of revenues and so as you can see there on the chart on the lower left, lower right-hand side, we have a solid, steady growth in our most important revenue for the city. So this is just, this is comforting for me to report that, you know, we, we don't have any concerns with this. We consistently outpace first half collections with second half collections and so this will continue to grow. We have no concerns with reaching our budgeted total of 6.62 million for 2025. Up in the top right-hand corner, that's your breakdown of all of the different entities. When you pay a 9% sales tax, 6.5 goes to the state, 2.4 to the county, 0.9 to the city, broken out as 0.8 to the general fund, 0.8 to our newly formed transportation benefit district for a total of 9%. Next slide, please. So permits, plan review and licensing, Lisa's department continues to kill it and so this is purely a cost recovery mechanism. Her monthly reports are much more indicative of the actual activity, but I'm just reporting, so to date we've collected roughly 62% of what we anticipated to collect for the year through the first half. Generally, you know, as, as you wind down into fall and December, maybe the, the pace with which we get permits and plan reviews will subside a bit. But, but we're trending exactly how we thought we were for, for permits and plan. Next slide, please. Some of the lesser, lesser discussed revenues, but still substantial are here on this slide and I apologize, we'll go through each one of these. These are, these are small, but the first one on the far left there is our Public Safety Special Purpose Tax. That is collected by the county and we get a per capita contribution based on that collection, much the same way with the Criminal Justice Sales Tax, the, the second one from the left there. And so what you see is we have these collections that really, we turn that around and send it right back to the county for detention services and dispatch services. And so this is, this is truly, we can point to these and give you a definitive return on what that is for, for what we're getting for that income. And so the other two state shared revenues are the cannabis excise tax there and the liquor taxes. When we first started collecting the cannabis tax, Chief Simmons had an idea of what he potentially wanted to do with that and we discussed implementing the flock camera system. And so that was kind of a like-for-like on cost and so we were able to informally attribute that new revenue stream to a dedicated source of, of use and so. And then on the far right-hand side, we have the liquor taxes. So these are, these are set by the state every year. These, these are easily predictable a year in advance and so these are performing as we intend, so. Next slide, please. Some of the other ones, so we have an admissions tax, which is relatively obscure, but it is centered around collecting a tax for county revenues that take place within our jurisdiction, most notably Meadowwood and Liberty Lake Golf Courses and so we charge ourselves a tax on that as well at Trailhead and it's essentially, it's a tax for golf services that we turn around and contribute to our parks and open spaces. And so again, as you can see that they're, they're performing exactly as, as we intend and as exactly as thought. And then on the right-hand side is our investment interest. This has been obviously we, we see the benefit and, and obviously there's correlated some, some some potential stresses on the other side, but right now we have the benefit of, of really high LGIP yields and so this is unrestricted revenue coming right back into the general fund for which the city can do with as they please. And so if we would have been looking at this in 2022, we would have budgeted maybe 25 or $30,000 because we're getting 0.01% on our money and trying to figure out how we can get out of LGIP. So, but that was nationwide and so we obviously have seen a major turnaround. We've been able to take advantage of, of maximizing what we have in there and maximizing that return, so.
Kyle, just to reiterate, I believe you said that the investment interest, we, we see that, that just goes with the general fund. We don't earmark it for anything special.
So, and it, so it is, it is pieced out exactly where the each fund has, so, so it's proportional to whatever each fund has in their reserves.
Oh, okay.
So REIT, REIT will have, you know, three and a half million.
Right.
General fund will have about 14 and so that's proportional based on what the actual reserve balances are for each fund. So you'll see a little bit of investment interest spread over all of those funds with obviously the, the lion's share going to the general fund.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Kyle, quick follow-up to that. So are you expecting that by the end of the year, we're going to be 120% of what we should?
Um, so the LGIP closely monitors what the feds do and I think there has been, obviously there's speculation monthly, certainly quarterly about what the feds might do with the interest rate. So
I haven't heard anything about that.
If we see like a half point drop or something like that, generally we'll probably see LGIP follow a month or two after. Generally, we'll probably see LGIP follow a month or two after, and so, you know. At, at the next possible. Instance, if that does, we might see a little bit of a drop in the LGIP, but. Really, we would be looking at impacts potentially for 2026 and beyond. But so. Long answer, short answer is yes, so we would expect them. Uh, next slide, please. So these are our department expenses through June, obviously, you know, we've gone through 50% of the year. I, I don't want to draw too much attention to where we're at, if, if we're at, you know, 52 or 54% for a department, I, I'm not concerned. If you guys will recall, I think it was the January 21st meeting, I think we had. 15 consent agenda items with various equipment, we had PD cars we're purchasing, we're purchasing. Heavy equipment for. Parks and streets and public works, and so. We have substantial upfront costs in January and February for not just equipment that was adopted. The prior month with the budget, but also services, annual fees will show up in January, and so you'll see a spike in expenses and certainly in the first quarter. And we'll see those level off throughout the year, and so as. As we give you third quarter numbers, we would expect to see something closer to 75% or below. And then obviously continuing that trend through the fourth quarter, and so. Obviously, we monitor these daily, weekly. If we see any trends on the expense side that, that we find concerning, obviously, we'll, we'll take that to, to the department. We do not have any of those concerns at this time. Next slide, please. So this is where we end, general fund as a whole. Through June. And so these numbers, I'll read them off in 2021, quarter, second, second quarter ending June 30th. We had 5.87 million. 2022, 4.93, 2023, 6.54, 2024, 8.45. And 2025. 8.14, so. Again, I'm, I'm. I'm very, I'm very confident, I'm very secure in what we're, what we're seeing quarter over quarter, year over year, especially for the last couple of years. In, in where we're at in terms of revenues and expenses, and so. We, I would anticipate that 8.14 continued to rise again, we just had the conversation of. A loaded Q1, a little bit Q2 on the expense side. Also understanding that, you know, on the heels of. Construction season, we'll see those revenues on sales and use tax side come in in the third and fourth quarter, so. I would anticipate that that ends up between now and the end of the year.
Kyle, a quick question on that, what is, can you just remind us all and those listening, what the. The lowest amount you would feel comfortable with having as an ending fund balance?
So, so general policy is you want. Three to six months of budgeted revenues in your ending balance, so if those revenues were to cease to exist. You could generally operate for three to six months. Without changing anything else, obviously, there would be other things changed, but. And so generally at about. A million or a little over a million a month. So I would, I would say. Four to five. With that number continuing to creep up as the city grows, as the, the need for service grows, we would want that. We would want that ending general fund balance to grow with that. Next slide, please. Public Works, so streets. Real estate excise tax funds, we do have some other capital funds we'll get into later, but for, for our discussions tonight on the operating side. This is our TBD sales tax. And so we're, we're trailing a little bit, but as we discussed, I, I fully expect us to hit that 830 by the end of the year for. Budgeted collection for the transportation benefit district sales tax. MVFT is our motor vehicle fuel tax, that is a state shared revenue. And so these, I, I would anticipate to catch up in. In the third and fourth quarter, REIT 1 and 2 at 49%, we will likely get. A, a. Much more substantial influx again. As we see. The, the collections from. The summer house selling season. Increase, so again, no concerns with where we're at with any of these revenues. Obviously, the TBD sales tax fund, street operations, REIT 1 and 2 fund our. A good chunk of our capital facilities planning projects. So, next slide, please.
Just real quick on this, Kyle?
Yeah.
We can go back to that side, I think it's worth noting that the TBD sales tax was what we used to replace the utility tax.
That is correct.
And so, you know, everyone who's, might be listening online or here in person, you know, we decided to make that shift. It went fully into effect last, was it last year?
Yeah.
2023?
Yep.
So this is the first year that it will be all TBD sales.
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Next slide, please. So on the expense side. Are over on the, the right hand side. That, that graph lets us know how we're doing on street operations. We had a light year for, for snow, we did not have significant snow events that contributed to. Obviously, wear and tear, machine use salaries, and so. So we did, we are obviously in a great spot in terms of, of our operating expense. For, for the streets fund. And then over on the other, on the right hand side, there are our capital projects. We have Mission, obviously looking to get underway here in, in August. We'll have discussions on the prepayment of the trailhead bonds this fall as well. And then what's before you tonight with the city hall design, and so we have several things. That we still obviously intend to carry out this year that'll push that number to the right up as. As we had planned.
Yeah, Kyle, regarding the, the prepayment on the trailhead bond, so. Are you saying that hasn't happened yet, that it's going to take place later in the year?
Correct, so we sent, so we sent notice to our holder Webster Bank. And so our principal payment was made in June, our first option to pay on the principal is in December.
December, okay.
Yeah. Next slide, please. Golf. So the line above. Is the revenues, the line below is expenses, if this was a 10 year. You would see that red line above the white, and so we have had successive banner years at the golf course at the outset of COVID. There was concern about. What that would look like, it. Golf took off, I would say nationwide, and it has not stopped, and so we have seen record numbers year over year. We had a little bit of stagnant growth in 2023. Obviously, we had to close the clubhouse and tear it down, so there was a little bit of a hit there on revenues, but. As you can see on, on the heels of that, we've, we've really. We've increased revenues, we've got an incremental increase, obviously, in, in, in expenses, but any. Any profit made from that. Any retained earnings is going to go towards a trailhead. Next slide, please. So this is, this is a. This is a collection of other funds that have had, I would call substantial expenses. So we have 26 funds, not all of them are active unless a specific purpose takes place. And so.
Oh, yeah, Kyle, sorry, can we go back to golf operations, I just want to clarify, the expenses are not including the, that bond payment, is that right?
No.
The bond payment isn't included, so, so if we've got a, you know, 159 through June, whatever. The. We may or may not be making that full payment out of golf operations, is that correct?
So, so golf will contribute 400,000 this year, and so if they can contribute more than. And so that's, so we'll have a baseline for which. They can kind of. Stay out of the red during the, during the first quarter, when, you know, there isn't really any activity, but outside of that. Any other ending balance or, or revenue will be put towards. And so what we have here is just, it's not all inclusive of, of the other funds. But they're worth mentioning, and so the one on the far left is our tours and promotion. As you may recall. Lodging tax awarded. Several entities tourism promotion funds earlier this year that council subsequently adopted. We will start seeing more of, of those start to come in, so hub, Rotary. Visit Spokane, Kuanas. And so all of those that have not submitted yet, you'll start seeing that creep up a little bit, but we still have, we still have a surplus in there, and so we're. We are aiming to have that be a like for like revenue and expense, we can justify the tax, and so. We'll have continued discussions in out years if that's not happening on, on what the, what the future of that tax looks like, if, if we're just. If it's being treated like a savings account, so. Moving along with the street capital, we have targeted in the CFP a couple of equipment items that we charged to, to that fund. We transferred the surplus of $500,000 that we had from overlap from the utility tax and the transportation benefit district. Tax, so that surplus was transferred into streets capital, and so you'll see different equipment items come back during budget season. To. For use for, for those funds. Harvard Road mitigation, we've had nominal activity in there, we do have. We, we have. Mission frontage improvements included. In Harvard Road this year, we have two other projects, I think smart signal control was one of them, I don't know, are we proceeding with smart signals, so, so that will not be expensed, but. There, there's plenty of things that will identify for, for future projects that can be attributed to the Harvard Road mitigation funds. So Library Capital, we just obviously finished with the design of that, so we had some costs incurred. On, on there, municipal facilities master plan, obviously, we, we vetted some other options for what to do with PD. Library Legacy Church, and so we had some costs incurred there as well. And then Stormwater APA, we have some larger projects identified. Potentially in out years for, for capital projects for, for use of those funds as well, so.
Kyle, a quick question on the Library Capital Fund, I believe the. The cost of the town square. Library slash, slash Knie Center was 167, is that right?
Yep.
So is that not in here?
Not all of it, and so we will, so when I, when we give you a third quarter, you'll see that jump up, so. Some of those, some of those invoices were, were given in July.
Got it, thanks.
And so, so with that, I'll stand for your questions, but overall, again, I'm very happy to report. Revenues are performing as intended, we are controlling our costs, overall, we're, we're still in a really solid position, so.
Any questions or additional comments for Kyle? All right, thanks, Kyle.
Thanks.
Mark, anything else you want?
The final item, thanks Kyle, the final item on my report, Mayor Proton is just another reminder. About the ongoing budget engagement associated with the annual 26, 2026 budget development. Today's Tuesday. We have a weekly question that goes out. Branded as Talk Back Tuesday, and so this is just an opportunity for residents. Businesses even guests. To tell us from a budgetary framework, what are some things that we need to prioritize? In the 2026 budget, and most of those questions are framed in the context of the community satisfaction survey, and so. We will bring a compiled report with all of those pieces of input back for the council as we begin to develop. The budget and we'll incorporate them in those discussions, and so look for those things online and continue to participate as they are available. And if there are no questions on that item, Mayor Proton, that concludes my report.
Any questions for Mark? All right, thank you, Mark, workshop discussions 9A, the comprehensive plan, climate resiliency goals and policies. It's all yours, Lisa.
I'm just gonna briefly kind of share with you what we're going to cover tonight and the purpose. We are really looking at issues of climate resiliency, it's dealing with. Impacts that we see from. Less rain, more snow. And potential for wildfires, et cetera, it is one of the things that I think that you'll find interesting, we'll give you an overview. Of the risk analysis and how it was done, how the, how the data was covered, what's required by the state, and then we're going to focus primarily. On the goals and policies and that I just want to share with you the context that. Many of these goals and policies are going to seem very familiar to you. Because they're goals and policies that have been identified actually in chapters throughout the comprehensive plan. And there are things that we already value, there are things that we're already doing and things that we need to do maybe more of. And so I, I would invite you to, after tonight, after hearing this, take a look back at your old comp plan. A lot of them are in the natural environment section, but you will find them in other areas of the comp plan, and these are things. That I think. Will really resonate with our community. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to John Phillips with Parametrics, he is online and he's going to be sharing with you his presentation, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, John Phillips with Parametrics, working with the City of Liberty Lake on their climate element. And today we are going to take a look. At the resilience sub-element, goals and policies, and give you a little update on our progress and where we're heading, and then solicit some feedback. So within the climate element, there are two sub-elements, the greenhouse gas reduction sub-element and the resiliency sub-element. And with all elements within the comp plan, the state has set requirements to meet. The three requirements for the resiliency sub-element is to make sure we're addressing natural hazards that may be created or aggravated by climate change. Identify, protect and enhance natural areas to foster climate resilience. And then identify and protect enhanced community resilience to climate impacts, including social, economic and built environment, so look at how. The economy is affected, how, how folks are affected within Liberty Lake, and then also how the buildings are affected. Just what did we look at, so we looked within the boundaries of Liberty Lake, including some of the areas. Outside the urban growth area, but part of maybe future expansion, that was kind of our geographic scope, we also wanted to make sure we covered the Spokane Valley, Rathfordum, Prairie Aquifer. And any impacts maybe happen with that, great. Work being done by the Interstate Alliance for that aquifer, and we did have some conversations with them to kind of get a sense of where that is. And then just kind of looked at the topography and what Liberty Lakes looks like, the main thoroughfares. Different areas of the city that may be impacted and maybe more or less vulnerable to some of the, the impacts or current impacts that are happening from natural hazards. There is not a major flood plain in Liberty Lake. There are some changes in topography, and then there's the large lake to your south. And some of the things we looked at, plus you're surrounded by some of the beautiful mountain ranges that we'll also see some changes as time goes on. We then took a look at some different risks, as Lisa mentioned, we looked at increasing temperatures. Decrease in snowpack. Wildfire risk, also wildfire smoke risk. Changes in precipitation patterns, which means heavier precipitation in the, in the winter, less precipitation in the summer. And the potential for landslides within Liberty Lake. Then we would take those risks, we laid them out and looked at both the high, moderate and low risk. Along with looking at the risks, the. Requirements for most. Climate reviews, when we do this type of work, is looking at a climate vulnerability assessment, and when we look at climate vulnerability, we look at how, how much someone could be impacted by a given hazard. Or how much something could be impacted by a given hazard, and we look at that exposure, how often or how likely is someone going to be exposed to that hazard? How sensitive someone is to that hazard, wildfire smoke is a great example of people with asthma or more sensitive. And then the adaptive capacity, and that's the ability for people to respond to a hazard, so that has a lot to do with some of the more vulnerable populations that we would look at in. In, in specific to Liberty Lake, where there might be more special attention to be paid to some of the communities that might need assistance during a hazard. Some of those vulnerable populations include retirement age adults, school age children. Some of those vulnerable vulnerable populations include um retirement age adults, school age children. Lower income individuals and families, folks who live alone. And of course, going back to some of the folks uh with chronic diseases or um health concerns. Um about seventy uh percent of the people in some of the wildfires that we've noticed and we've been looking at over time. Um that have perished in wildfires were people that um were over the age of sixty and had a difficult time getting out of their communities. So we do pay a special attention to what's happening around the 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 world or even around the country. And what impacts are happening, so we can bring those. And those are things that are happening today, um and are happening within our our current time period periods. So when we do the risk assessments, we take a lot of this into consideration. Um kind of lay it out and um impact and a probability, which is the definition of risk, but we also looked at the mitigation difficulty. That's how easy or hard is it for the city to implement measures that would reduce or eliminate that risk? And I would say that we don't get the opportunity to eliminate that to to eliminate those risks. But we do have the opportunity to make those risks less severe, and that kind of goes into that adaptive capacity. Goes back to feeding into how resilient you are. And when we say low risk, we don't mean no risk. There's still a risk of these things. It's just the uh. This sensitivity or the impact probability isn't as great. Whereas we may look at other areas and that risk may be higher or lower, but that isn't saying it's not going to happen. It's just might not be as severe as other places or within the city. So um overall, our our risk assessment for Liberty Lake. Um the the things we looked at the most, of course, were wildfires. The um decrease in snowpack, which could uh eventually in um impact the water sources around. Um Liberty Lake, which is mostly that aquifer that's fed by the mountain lakes and and rivers um on the other side of the border. Higher temperatures, um which you're probably experiencing in the last few weeks, those temperatures keep getting warmer, longer periods of time where you're over. Um a hundred degrees, longer period of time where the night times over either sixty five or seventy degrees, which has a big impact on people's health. We when they can't recover from the heat during during the day. Wildfire smoke is something that you could be impacted, even if it's not within directly within your community. We see that almost every summer here now in in all over Washington State in the Pacific Northwest where. Um fires in other places are bringing smoke in and um even a little bit of smoke has the hazards for folks that have uh sensitivity to that. Folks with asthma, COPD, things like that. Precipitation, um these are kind of the wet season impacts, so that winter time, while that season may become shorter over time, we do see. The same amount of rain on an annual basis, but just coming in uh more severe storms over time. So the the pressure would be on your stormwater system, which we talked a little bit about in in the policies. And also um as was mentioned, you're finding it's um snow. We do consider, we do use the word precipitation because we really don't have a good idea of whether whether that um those winter uh heavier uh events would be. Falling as snow or rain, but we do assume there's more precipitation. If it's colder, then yes, you would get the snow. Those snowstorms more be maybe more severe. Uh you may get more snow in a a shorter period of time or more rain in a shorter period of time, which both cause um headaches. And then landslides and overall, we looked at the landslide risk around Liberty Lake, major landslides. Um and felt that was low, so focusing more on the um difficult to mitigate. Um the overall risks are higher wildfire, the decreased snowpack and impact on water resources and temperature. So how do we determine what the goals are and what the the city can actually do? Uh we come up with kind of the idea of this implementation levers. What can a city do on its own? Whether it's educated, um its citizens, I want to do communicate um the actions that are uh that are needed to build more resiliency. Or actually sit down and plan and implement things. We looked at both the uh a concept of transportation resiliency, your ability to move in and out of the city. During it is um a natural hazard or an incident. And also took a close look at the stormwater master plan to make sure when we're seeing those extreme precipitation uh events, the the city is prepared for them. And of course, everything we can do to prepare for it, both um as individuals and as communities and as city governments. So we're gonna. Jump right in. Um so when we developed these goals and policies, um we had uh. A a number of them that were provided as examples that we could bring in. We also look at the existing um. Uh plans and documents that are out there, including like this, like Spokane County Hazard Mitigation Plan, your existing comp plan. Um other examples of where people have brought in some measures in it. And and honestly, we had a few that were just recommendations from either the climate policy advisory team or some of the the stakeholders. Our first job was to hold kind of a resilience workshop where we went over a lot of these. Uh risks in detail with a group of folks. This includes your Parks and Recs Department. The um Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District, Spokane County Parks, um folks from Gonzaga and their Climate Institute. The Spokane Valley Fire Department, um your police, the school district, uh Vista Energy, a Spokane Regional Transit Council. Um and the Greater Spokane Incorporated, so your economic uh greater economic folks and Chamber of Commerce, and of course, city administrators. We also did some one on one with the Spokane Tribe, uh SNAP. And then uh folks who are both enthusiastic and skeptical about planning and Planning Commission members. As you heard earlier, the climate policy advisory team worked very closely with us as we developed the goals and policies. Um and then we presented this to the Planning Commission and got feedback from them on our draft resiliency goals that we'll be presenting with you. And as Lisa reminded us, these overlap with other elements and that was expected that, you know, folks that have been looking at their natural environment in their comp plan. Would have a lot of these goals and policies already included. So once we start moving and other parts of the comprehensive plan get done, we will integrate these with those um uh. As well, so we're not being repetitive within the plan, but being very sure that we're covering both the current hazard and future hazards. So here we go on to the goals and policies. And these are um, I understand these are in your packet, so um read them on the screen. I'm just gonna kind of talk over the goals um and then the policies you all can look at. As we go on or as we move through it. So our first one is kind of the resiliency goals around land use. And this is making sure you're not building in high hazard areas and um identifying areas where it may not be suitable for um for building. And what you might do with those areas as well. And also thinking about how critical open space areas are to uh your future resiliency and how those open spaces are used. Continuing on, there's additional page of of land use policies, still making sure we're looking at the um the built environment and how land is is used. Nothing really jumped out um. Immediately for this one, so you know, we can look at the each of the policies and and kind of see where we're going and always there's um room for. Looking at how these overlap with the other elements. Our next goal is to look at the water quality and quantity, and this is going right to uh the Liberty Lakes or Water District and the Consolidated Irrigation District. And I mean, a lot of good conversations on looking at their existing plans and how those goals, this goal might be met. As we look at the future of water and the impact of growth. And these continue on. Um one of the things I'd like to point out is the the good job that Liberty Lake is doing with their stormwater system. Um and having a lot of infiltration and low impact development already in in place and in planning, which is great because that both uh controls some of these higher uh more extreme events. But also starts feeding back into that aquifer over time. When we got to the policies around cultural resources and practices, I think recommendations from the staff was to look at. What those resources are locally um versus, you know, historic buildings or um. Uh other traditional uh cultural resources that might be impacted. We really did look at those things that make Liberty Lake kind of the the great place to live and have that high quality of life of having. Trails and parks and things like that as part of that natural resource. Um some of the things we looked at here also um is managing that tree canopy um and your green belts. And those um become, they can both be um exacerbated by wildfires, but also protect residents and improve your ecosystem ecosystems and your health and habitat. Um and looking at how native plants um and protecting those um those um. The shrubs, steeps that are kind of local to this area and how the the different ecosystems around Washington State should be protected into the future and what those might look like. And of course, trails, trails are always helpful to have and um do help with resiliency as much as they help with other things. Just giving people a second avenue of of um. Of transportation, a second choice for transportation, other than trying to get in a car and driving out. Continuing on with the um cultural resources, we also looked at the the idea of urban canopy and the trees as well. Um and you can see here in notes where this overlaps with the natural resources chapters. The next one that comes up is the local transportation system um and identifying the the risks that might be. Um happening in the vulnerabilities to critical transportation corridors, whether roads get closed because of natural hazards. Where people need to move to, this is um something we've been looking at a lot at both the LA but um wildfires and the Lahaina wildfires. And how small pockets of populations became kind of isolated and trapped and unable to move out. Um which led to the recommendation to kind of come up and look at a um as we look at the kind of transportation network for Liberty Lake, also look at a transportation. Um resiliency and how different places might move it. Interestingly enough, um the police officers that attended the um the workshop were very uh vocal and helped us quite a bit. Talk through different things that might happen if a small wildfire occurs or anything like that. And where they had to kind of protect those vital streets so people could still get out if that wildfire were to spread. And then, of course, emergency preparedness, and this is really just looking at um. How well and how prepared the community is and what things you can do and um just making sure we're protecting those vital resources of first responders. But also making sure the community knows what to do in an emergency, which way they should be, which way they should be running, so to speak. Um and then also looking at um. Uh where you can put local um hubs, so people have a place to go, get information, escape, you know, the smoke, escape the heat um are also important. So you'll see some policies in here that actually make some really direct um recommendations on what to do next. Continuing on with emergency preparedness, we talked about evacuation. Another big one in emergency readiness is just, you know, you're gonna have natural hazards that cause damage. There's gonna be debris. Getting that debris moved out um and moved away, so you can reduce other incidents and other risks that may be part of that. Um having to clear a lot of brush, not having that brush sit around for for uh multiple days, which actually become a fire hazard, things like uh. Uh debris from um burnt homes or anything like that, just to make sure we're thinking about those risks. And how that goes into the overall strategy of both dealing with the emergency upfront, but also dealing with the aftermath. The other part of these policies is making sure as buildings are built or retrofitted. That we're designing and building them sustainably to reduce their impacts, um making sure that they can resist the extreme weather, that they're. Designed to have both passive cooling and active cooling, especially in the event of any power outages. And as time moves on, if we start seeing brownouts from the local um power providers due to the wildfire risk. Community health is another uh area we want to really focus on. This is where we look at um those things like how do you uh. Filter air within a building for um days of of high smoke, um days of high heat, making sure air is clean. Make sure we're looking out for the folks that have the least means to address some of their climate impacts and what they might need to um reduce their risk. Um as well, and this is where we look at the kind of different populations and what they might need and make sure we have some policies and know they recover the needs of some of the other populations within. Liberty Lake that might be um more uh vulnerable to some of these climate impacts. And of course, lastly, and and this came with um. Not lastly, almost last, but came with a lot of recommendations from the climate policy advisory team was more public education around resilience. Like we said, one of those levers is educate, let people know what they can do. Um build good relationships with your community based organization, so they're communicating out to their their clients and their customers. Um making sure people know who live in those wild urban interface areas about firewise and firewise protection. Um you know, don't plant arborvitis. Um that seems to be the big rule these days. Um but also looking at how to protect your own property from this and how other places are protected from the fires. Um and building those coalitions, so when something does happen, people have great resources to to look at. Uh and it can't all be done. It takes a village to kind of respond to these natural hazards and it can't all fall in the back of the city operations. And speaking of city operations, of course, we wanted to make sure that city operations were more resilient. Um and we had some policies included in there that you can go through. Such as backflow preventers, um making sure that irrigation and preventive maintenance are done in a way that are wise. Um and then um making sure there's a continual operation plan. So as things happen, people know who to go to and who to who to run and, you know, train your train your staff to to make sure they know what to do in an in an emergency. So now that we have goals, kind of went over the goals, didn't hit every policy, but kind of gave you a good overview, talked a little bit about next steps and where we are in the process. Um this has been um uh. A great time and it seems like it's flown by because it's been so fun to go through all this. Um we have the climate element goals and policies and the next step is to have those uh ready to go and then integrated into the overall con comprehensive plan over the next year or so. Um so. Um that's where we are. We're here to present the goals and policies, let you cool over them, ask questions and provide input. So with that, I have one slide with the infamous question mark. Um any comments, questions, concerns, ideas that you'd like to share?
All right, we'll open it up to the council for comments and questions. Councilmember Kennedy.
I would comment, thank you for that report. I would comment that the goals are many numerous goals. And I would assume if we can reach some of those, at least it's better than none. But the question has come up in the past is that what's on my this cost? And I would say with beyond the shadow of the doubt, there is no way we can put a number on this. This, something like this would just be astronomical. So. To for me is for me to try to spin my wheels on ascertaining what the cost would be. Would be anti productive. You know, I think if we can achieve some of these over a period of time, great. But uh, thank you.
Councilmember Dunn.
Um hey, a question maybe, Lisa, I'm trying to remember um. A Vista presented to us as a group their power, public power safety shut off program. Um this is part of their objective in trying to deter wildfire. Um I recount for that at the time, kind of like shock and awe was the number of what they characterize as high risk. Power distribution, and I'm going to say transmission uh in our community. I would consider that carefully uh in the sense of goals. Uh with respect to how many uh high risk characterized by the utility. Uh transmission and distribution lines are in our town. I'm wondering where that fits, you know, in the context of the goals.
That's a great question. Um and we were engaged with a Vista in the process of developing these goals and policies. There is opportunities for partnership. Um they are, they do have programs in place to address that. We do have some goals and policies related to resiliency and talking with a Vista in terms of things like. Um uh so backup power, backup power sources for um for essential facilities and whatnot. Um as Mark has talked about in other um council meetings. Staff is right now working on uh the Hazard Mitigation Plan Annex. We will be doing additional, we will be expanding the efforts of what we have done in the past, and this is ongoing as we speak. We're also, we're also doing a lot more in terms of. Planning the the when when um John mentioned the um. Transportation resiliency piece that we're going to be doing on the heels of our network analysis. That's really about working with PD and fire and looking at. What the opportunities are for things like evacuation routes, et cetera. So we are, the intent is that we have done some of this planning in the past. And there's a commitment to taking it to the next level. And this is something that I'm speaking to Councilmember Kennedy's point, this is something that we're going to have to build on over time.
Yeah, I mean, I find the goal uh goals one in land use to be applicable and talking about the. You know, I'd say the endangerment of high risk transmission. But um yeah, I think that the framework looks great. I mean, the the goals are stated. I can now see. Kind of try to begin to imagine how to how to operationalize that. Um and I just, I, the the effort, the energy, the action is beyond the scope of just our community. So I I recognize the partner for that action. The second thing I offer is an observation is um transportation uh goal four and its relationship to uh land use goal one. Um we are integrally involved in like the definition of. We are integrally involved in like the definition of what can be built where. And that, in my perception, drives directly, well, now they all got to get out, got to get out of here. So I'm just looking for the ways to connect Goal Four with Goal One to ensure that transportation evacuation routes are protected.
Absolutely. And again, these are the, these are some of the implementation strategies going forward. These are things that we are looking at that we're, again, as, as you know, having been a Planning Commission member for so very long, you understand that we deal with the different pieces of the comprehensive plan, but the art of the comprehensive planning is integrating all those elements. And that's, and so that is the piece of it. And as John so eloquently put in his presentation, that's the next big piece. One of the reasons why the, it's important for us to get these elements done early is so that we can begin to layer and build that implementation strategy with the other elements within the comprehensive plan.
Yeah. I don't know, also add just that regarding the transportation goal, specifically collaboration with STA, what a great partner. Earlier this summer, to watch STA operationalize transportation for 300 people adjacent the fire, I think that was the it was near the Parkway, Spokane, U. Wells Community College. Just, you know, it's a board member, he gets there and all kinds of updates from operations regarding the movement of specific, you know, vehicles and our support immediate evacuations. So great partner in the community and I'm certain that goal is going to be well supported. Thanks.
Additional questions or comments? Councilmember Van Norman.
Lisa, I just wondered with everything that we're doing here as a city, one up would be what can we do as homeowners within our residence?
So that's a great question. One of the things that we did with and will be doing with the engagement piece is we actually are going to be reaching out to our partners and doing, we've co-opted the term firewise. It's a very specific term for a community coming together. But the strategies that can be employed by individual homeowners. And so we are planning on doing some trainings related to how people can harden the, their properties to be more resistant to the impacts of potential wildfire and whatnot. And so that is something that we're going to be looking, we're probably looking at later in the fall or possibly even an early winter. We think that it would be an ideal early winter kind of thing. That I think it's a real, it's a real opportunity and to start the conversation. There's a lot of partners that can come to the table and help us with that conversation.
Thank you. Yeah.
I thought, Lisa, firewise residential landscaping, for example, really suggests no less than five feet between the building and any like landscaping features. Just to deter fuel loading, any of the fire activity. So I foresee a ton of ability to contribute to residents and businesses in the community about how to make their structures and buildings and properties more resilient.
And and again, I think the intent with the workshop is it's a great opportunity for us to get feedback on this and educate on this, but it's also, again, building capacity and and with our partner agencies in terms of how we can push more information out to the community in terms of the things that they can do. And it really, in the case of resiliency, it really does take a community. It's not something that we, the city alone, can do.
I'll just jump in, Lisa, with a couple of questions and maybe John, I can answer some of these as well. So I want to go to page fourteen of the recommendation where it lists the high, what it, what it refers to as high probability. And it lists basically those, those five or six different categories, wildfire risk, flooding, storms, those type of things. And it says that they are all of high probability to happen. Can you define what high probability means?
I will actually turn that one question over to John. He's the technical expert that had really conducted the full risk assessment.
Got it.
And there is a specific methodology that we have to follow with the date. John?
Sure, thanks, Lisa. And to answer your question, we basically look 70 years out and look at the probability of something occurring if it's greater than basically seventy, seventeen percent chance. So we look at that as kind of our, our marker. And it, the data comes, go ahead.
John, did you say seventeen or seventy?
Seventeen over seventy years. So in that seventy-year period, we start at that seventeen percent. Most of this we're looking at actually has about a fifty percent chance of increasing in risk over the current time. And that's what we looked at, like Liberty Lake is certainly at risk of of wildfire through precipitation events and heat events right now. And as that increases, how much will it increase that risk? So if there's a high chance that that risk is going to increase over the current time, then we put it in a high probability. And that can go anywhere from fifty to eighty-three percent probability. And what's nice is all this is kind of broken up for us, the data that we use to do it. So if you look at our climate vulnerability assessment, you'll see kind of specific numbers of those exposures like heat, temperature, precipitation, wildfire, and what those risks are. We get that data from multiple sources, mostly from University of Washington, who puts the information out, but also from other sources to around the Pacific Northwest that have kind of done a lot of analysis of how much that probability will increase over time. And I would say we could go down and say, what's the probability of you having a wildfire in any given summer? There's a shorter window of time. As that time expands, as that probability expands too. So we also look at it from a time scale within a summer, how much of that summer is going to be a high wildfire risk? Or how much of that summer may be over a hundred degrees Fahrenheit? How much will the precipitation change in the winter, looking mostly at the November through March timeframe? So we just look at that different data sets and assign those probabilities based on what it looks like that happens over the existing risk of that occurring or the existing probability.
So I just want to make
Can I, can I, can I just add on to that? So we didn't provide you with the climate risk assessment. It is on our comprehensive plan webpage. Also, our story map on climate resiliency goes into a lot of detail about this. I'm happy to send you links to those. I'm happy to send you the documents. I did not include them in your packet because it would be, it would be killing a tree.
So, John, going back to, I'm glad you brought up University of Washington because that's one of the things I was trying to figure out here. Obviously, it talks a lot in here about decreased snowpack. Specifically, it says that after 2070, we're not going to get any snow after April 1st each year. So obviously, that caught my attention, but then I went and looked at some of the items that the University of Washington put out, specifically Mark Albright and Cliff Mas. And they said that base, that basically there's little trend in the snowpack since nineteen eighty-four. So I'm trying to figure out which meth, I mean, how do you choose which methodologies that we're using from U Dub or from any other Gonzaga or any other resource that you're using?
I mean, basically, we would use the most updated studies and right now the the Snowpack Study, while it's probably about ten years old at this point, but this Topak Study that was done probably around twenty twelve. And that was also done by Cliff Mas. It was also done by John Albigzani out of University of Idaho and Phil Mo out of Oregon State University. They took a look at snowpack specifically in the Cascade and the Idaho ranges because that was a water resource slash was actually funded by the ski resorts of looking at how much snowpack and how that might impact the ski season. That was then interpolated for how that might impact water resources. If you'd like a copy of that study, it's actually on the U Dub website under Snowpack. So that's the one we would use. And it's one that basically the, the folks at U Dub Climate Impacts Group recommends for us to use. Commerce has done a nice job of setting that up for us to find the most up-to-date science. And then I've worked a long time with the University of Washington throughout my career on climate impact information. So just understanding which one's the latest study that shows that. There's more work coming out because the global circulation models, the GCMs, they use for kind of global prediction, projections and climate change. They were updated three years ago. They also have more information, although we're sticking to the information that U Dub has, there's more information that will be available to look at over the next five years and what might be happening. But right now, the consensus from the University of Washington is that in these Northwest ranges, that the snowpack, like we said in that report, you wouldn't see, it would be, be less snow after April 1st. That snowpack would decline by about ninety percent. And that's kind of variable along all the different areas of the ridges, but a ninety percent decrease in snowpack. And that's also being used by the Corps of Engineers that looking at the Columbia River basin and what the future flows in the Columbia River Basin would be, which includes this area. So and we've used a lot of that information and some studies we've done for other projects too. So we have a lot of back and forth with the folks working on the climate science. We don't, I mean, we have a couple of scientists on our team, the project manager Beth is a scientist, but we all look at, you know, the folks that are actually out there doing that research and what's the most up-to-date research. So we go to the University of Washington Climate Impacts Group. They have a series of reports. We can look up a certain impact and see what the latest science is on that. And if we have questions, we just need to email or call them and they're very good at talking to us about, you know, what does this mean? And specifically, what does it mean to different areas of Pacific Northwest?
That, that's good to know. Thank you. I was just looking at Cliff's report from May 5th of this year. So that's why I have that question. I guess I had two other quick questions and comments. One, Lisa, on the first page of the policy recommendations, it says, it refers to possibly creating special zoning districts. Do you have a example of what we mean by that?
Well, I actually I do. And so this is something that international, the, the fire code that they've been looking at related to the wild urban interface. And that has come up in several rounds of code updates. The last round, it looked like it was going to go in and it was going to have some, like an overlay zone that would limit certain types of construction materials in those zones. That did not, at the end, that did not get adopted, but it's likely to get adopted in the next round of building code updates. Fire code typically follows the same update cycle. And so that would be an example, actually identifying and, and one of the reasons why it didn't get adopted is because the WUI maps that they were looking at, that's what they call the wild urban interface. I just love saying that. The WUI maps needed additional attention. They, they weren't very good. And so they wanted to, to on a side, use a more scientific basis for design, defining what those zones might be so that they could put limitations in place that were relevant to the risk.
Okay. One more quick question. One of the things that I actually really like in this in this report is the reference to water conservation. And so obviously I have concerns about our, the, the health of the aquifer, especially in the late summer to early fall months and how much water we have available. I guess my question, and maybe this is a question for Sean, or maybe Lisa, you know the answer. What, what role does the city play in that vis-à-vis Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District? For instance, if we wanted to pass a resolution just for the sake of argument, that limited water watering your yard, for instance, certain times of the day, is that something the city could do? Is that something Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District would do? Where, where's the line between the two?
I think that probably either entity could do it. It becomes pretty challenging and with, I live in the city of Spokane.
Right.
We, we have those limitations. They don't enforce them. They don't even have any means to enforce them.
Right.
So that's a challenge, but it is important to educate and partner. And we, we were very careful as we were crafting these goals and policies to be uber-aware of what levers were within our locus of control and what rested with others. So where you see educate or partner or encourage, it's recognizing that this is not really so much within our locus of control, but we have, but we can certainly partner with other entities to try and encourage that. We had really a very good conversation with Bijay and Jeremy and his team. Nada was actually attended that meeting as well, talking about things that we could do together to partner to try and really focus on, try and focus the community on more water conservation. So, so I think that there are opportunities and the devil will be in the details moving forward, but there's an openness and a, a desired partnership in that area.
Well, I think the biggest pet peeve I have is seeing, especially folks who have automatic water systems, watering their yards at five o'clock in the afternoon when it's a hundred and five degrees outside, which is just a complete waste of water and doesn't help anybody. You know, I, I appreciate Mr. Solberg reading what I said on my Facebook page because I one hundred percent stand behind that. I do think these are going to have broad tentacles into everything that the city does for the next ten to twenty to thirty years. And it will be very costly, as we've talked about and as Councilmember Kennedy point out, we don't even know what the cost is going to be on a lot of these things. However, I think this part of it is good because we're talking about the, the specific ways that we can protect the community from different things that may be coming up. And I think the most important part of this particular report is on the emergency preparedness piece and how if we have to evacuate the city for whatever reason, how do we get everybody out of here when we only have basically two or three entry points that the majority of people know about. So I appreciate it. Thank you. Councilmember Spencer.
Thank you. When, when I'm looking at these goals and, and I, I like to look at goals in terms of SMART goals, and I think what's missing here is the, the measurable piece and the time-bound portion. And so I guess my question is, is, is the intent to try and accomplish all of these things within that period of the next comprehensive plan? Or I, I didn't see anything in here that said we're, we're hoping to, you know, achieve this by X date. And, and then, of course, to to go off of what Mayor Potem Cargill and, and Councilmember Kennedy mentioned, the, the costs are going to be significant. And, and so my other question is just, just as a reminder, the grant that we were given is not going toward any sort of implementation of, of these sub-elements. Is that correct?
That is correct. And but there are other opportunities for us to go after grant funding with the state. Just not on these particular pieces, but there are other programs that fit within these goals and policies. One of the things that, and there's a couple of things that I want to say about the, the SMART goals. One of the last things we will do with this comprehensive plan is really put together our implementation strategies. And the implementation strategies are really going to focus on the five-year period. We have a check-in in five years to see how we're doing on that. So we do, we have to kind of get, we, we have to get the broad tent to be able to narrow down what we think we can do in the next five years, et cetera. And that will require some additional conversations as well. I don't disagree with you. The other thing is that I, I remind you that this council has been very intentional about doing strategic plans every five years. And that's where you take these goals and policies when you really start looking at. Left with my windows open last night and suffer, and I'm suffering from the smoke.
Here, let me pass one on for you.
Anyhow, I'm, I'm sorry, this is my train of thought.
So if you recall,
Five-year goals.
Yeah. So if you recall the, kind of the Gantt style chart that we presented to you when we talked about the infrastructure strategy, you have the comprehensive plan up top, which spans this twenty-year period. And then you've got all these other planning efforts that kind of are subservient to that over shorter periods of time with a strategic planning cycle typically being about five years.
Yeah. And the point being that is where you drill down on the specific. Yeah. And the point being that is where you drill down on the specific, what are we going to accomplish in this timeframe? So that's, I appreciate your comments and I very much buy into the concept of smart goals and policies.
Additional comments or questions for Lisa now that we have her all choked up? All right. Thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to general business items. I will make a motion to approve general business consent agenda items 10A, B, C, E, F, and G.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Dunn. Any, nope, no comments. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, passes 5-0. Thank you all. We are now on to a general business item 11A, the letter of support request for the MultiCare Certificate of Need application. Mr. Mark, do you want to take this or?
So this, sure. This is basically a request that we received from MultiCare, who's in the process of going through a, a application with the Department of Health to place a four operating room ambulatory surgery center in Spokane Valley. And they're looking for letters of support for that endeavor under the guise of expanding the health options and the basically wellness goals that the county has outside of Spokane proper. And so I, I think what we were planning to do is to have an actual letter for you to look at so that you could hopefully arrive at a consensus that you were providing the mayor the authorization to sign it and send it in in support of this request from MultiCare. I, I think you have the template of the letter that they've proposed. And so we would now have to, assuming that there's consensus from the council to support this request, craft an actual letter that we would need to get your eyes on before we send it out under the August 11th deadline that they've provided, which is next Monday, I believe.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Dunn?
I move general business action out of 11A.
I'll second it. Any discussion? I'll just quickly mention that I've done a lot of work on the certificate of need stuff before and I, it's this archaic setup that we have where basically we're, we limit the number of beds and facilities available for our citizens. So I am 100% in favor of, of trying to expand that. Any other comments? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, passes 5-0. Thank you very much, Mark. We are now on to 11B, which was formerly 10D, the Design Services Agreement for City Hall renovation. We want to put it on the floor first, meaning in motion, but Mike can, okay. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm already aware of the answer to this, but I had two citizens contact me and ask if we could explain this in the meeting. So they would have a better idea of moving forward. What we're authorizing tonight as this dollar amount is for this company to do the design only. They are not the construction company who's going to do the work.
That's correct, Councilmember.
Very good. And then the process is from here, once we have that design, we will go into putting out the bids. And the similar process of what we did with Trailhead, where we had a series of individuals that came and gave us presentations. We had a committee forum that looked at that and we made a decision on who we would go with.
Yeah, that's correct. So this, this, this covers BCRA, who've been, we've been working with for quite a while on the master plan. They presented this after, I mean, I went through the kind of the selection process for, for them in the, the summary statement. This include, the, the price that you see on the agenda includes design and post-construction services. Obviously, that wouldn't take into account until we actually award a construction contract. But this price is basically takes us to the end of that construction contract, the total amount.
Okay. The other thing was, was really not a question, I guess, but a concern of my point. Was I look at something like this and we're looking to approve a budget of $428,398, almost a half million dollars for a company to start doing design. And then in a recent meeting, unfortunate Councilman Kurtz is not here. I don't want to put any words in her mouth or misquote what she has said. And if I do say something that's incorrect for the next meeting, I'll certainly apologize for something like that. But what was implied, maybe what was implied, maybe we should be keeping the church building on second, and just invent that the vote for, a vote for the library and community center fails. When I heard that, it, it concerned me. Because I thought if we're going to get into a discussion that there's still a possibility of putting the library in there, then why would we move forward with such as a deal like this tonight to approve 400 and some odd thousand dollars for this? So I want to be comfortable moving forward that this is our goal. We're going to put out this kind of money. I know that I've had individuals come to this podium and say, well, it's a wasted money because it's going to cost us $6,000 or $7,000 to put something on the ballot. We're putting out a half million dollars for design. And it really concerns me if there's the slightest possibility that the future council would look at this and go, eh, you know.
I, I don't think there was an actual question there, so.
No. Councilmember Dunn?
Here's Ben. This, this is not a progressive design build objective.
No, sir.
Yeah. So that's kind of a contrast in performance to our most recent large-scale capital projects here at the city.
Yes, sir. Based, based on the, I mean, that, that's a new facility, you know, new footprint, design, progressive design build maybe makes a little more sense because this is kind of a very, it's a, it's a renovation project for, for longer term. It, it makes more sense to just get the design done. And obviously, Councilmember Kennedy, that all, everything you said could possibly happen and we're standing by if that changes. But at this point, we are moving forward on the direction that we've received from council.
Yeah, that's great. I just look forward to great construction management in the bid process then to see that it comes off as planned and paid for. Thanks.
Additional comments? I'll just echo Councilmember Kennedy's concern. When I heard that last night, I was also concerned seeing as though this was, as he mentioned, an almost $500,000 project. So if the intent here is to backpedal and move the library potentially back to the original idea, which was Legacy Church, which I don't think any of us anymore think is a, a great idea, we would be blowing essentially $430,000 to, to do that. Unless you're telling me that potentially we might at a future time be able to change it, I suppose. I mean, where, when do you think we would have something back or something substantial that we could look at?
So we are, we're barring a, a no vote tonight. We were starting, we're going to start on schematic design literally next week.
Okay.
So we would, if you look at the schedule, we would basically have schematic design, which is really just a, a, a basically 35% design by October. So before the vote. So we would have at least how, you know, the layout of the building and maybe some initial elevations, interior elevations. Obviously, it's called it the same on the outside, but that's kind of the first milestone is October.
Yep. Any other questions, comments? Okay. If not, we will make a motion then, or I will make a motion to approve a design services agreement for the City Hall renovation not to exceed $428,398.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Spencer. One more opportunity for comments. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes 5-0. Thank you all very much on that as well. All right, council comments? Any council comments?
Possibly, I don't get my thoughts together here.
Uh, Councilmember Spencer will go first then.
Well, I'll, I'll just piggyback in on this, on this last topic and the last vote. I, I think, you know, there's been a lot of talk over the years that I've been on council about taking staff recommendations. We were approached by the staff and, and they told us that a higher priority for that building is going to be City Hall. That's the direction we're moving and, and my hope would be that we will follow through with that.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes. My comments are based on comments that have come over the last period of time, not only on social media, but within these confines of this room where we have always, we've always encouraged individuals to come in here, identify if they live within the city, but if not identify, and give us their three minutes. And we listen. I think we're very respectful of that. I think we're very respectful to allow free speech. I think that's, that's important. But in the recent meeting, rightful concern, and I, I shared some of this concern, was we seem to be getting, it said incorrect information from citizens that don't even live within the city. And the mayor pointed out, and I am in somewhat with agreement with that, is that moving forward on something, what we're trying to do, we need to focus on what the citizens, people are actually going to vote on this type of things happening with the city and who's going to pay for it. Now that leads me to two of the people that called me, asked this other question and said, are you going to start restricting individuals coming in if they don't live within the city to be able to give their opinion? And if that's correct, would you also allow individuals on Thursday, when we have the meeting from 5:30 to 7:30 at the library? Are the people who don't live within the city, do they have the right to come in and give their opinion? And I think it was a legitimate question. My assuming answer would be, well, of course we allow that. All right. So I think there's a question there. I'm not sure if we're getting any comment from the council. Second thing I think is even more important is that a lot has come up is, well, there's misinformation out there. Well, I'm here to say that there's always misinformation. You're not going to get away from that. And the only way we can find misinformation is misinformation is to back it up with facts. And that's the difficult thing to do. There's a particular individual who twice have come to the podium and commented about how this council, majority of the council in essence, killed the library going into the church building because we, in my words, robbed the money away from that because it was totally funded. Well, I'm here to tell you, and if I'm wrong, I trust, trust me, somebody will let me know very quickly. That was not totally funded. $1.5 million, I mentioned this last night, $1.5 million was in the budget to make up the $6 million for that. $1 million was on a grant that we were authorized to, we qualified for. But along with many others, there was no guarantee we were going to get it. $500,000 additional was put in there to say, well, we anticipate $500,000 in donations. And any business in a city is a business. You can't do that. You can't take fictitious money and put it in your budget and say it's going to be earmarked for something. Now with common sense, that was removed because it's bad accounting to do that. And it brought it down. There was about $4 million, something like that. So it did fall short of the $6 million. But I want to point out that wrong information is when somebody comes to the podium on two occasions and says it was fully funded. It was not. Thank you.
Additional comments? Councilmember Van Orme?
When we're talking about spending extra money and getting truthful information out, whether it's in this dais or even on social media, it, it's going to be difficult because you can't stop free speech. One way or the other, you can't stop free speech, but you can go ahead and post what is truth, what is correct and do as much education as you can. We've been educated enough to know that City Hall is expanding and it needs help. And that's our priority. So I'm in favor of this.
Anything else from the council? All right, hearing none. No public hearings or appeals, no resolutions. We are up to ordinances, the second read of ordinance 308C. And we'll turn it over to Rochelle.
Thank you. Ordinance 308C, amending ordinance 308, passed by the City Council on December 17th, 2024, entitled and ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, adopting a budget for a period of January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025, appropriating funds and establishing salary schedules for established position.
Councilmember Dunn?
I move ordinance 308C as read.
Second. Okay, motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Kennedy. We do need to take public testimony. So online and online, please, not all at once. We will open it up for public testimony right now. Anyone here in chambers or online wishes to testify? Going once? Going twice? All right, any discussion by the council? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance 308C, amending ordinance 308, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Passes 5-0. Thank you all. No emergency ordinances in introduction of upcoming agenda items. You have the sheet in front of you. Are there any additions? I will just make note of the two special meetings that are on here for October 14th and November 11th. I assume that those are just Mark if needed.
At, at this point, all of the budget items that are not on regularly scheduled council meetings should be considered as needed.
Okay. Is there anything, anyone else wants to add to this? I did have one question about whether we wanted to wait or do this now, moving the November 4th meeting, since that is an election night. Or do we need to move it?
I think we wait until there are other council members here to participate in that discussion. I agree.
Okay. Anything else on this particular list? Okay. Good with that. We are up to citizen comments. Again, you have three minutes. Please tell us who you are, if you live in the city. You online? Anyone online either?
No.
All right. And with that, we can all dry our eyes because we're not going to be here tomorrow night, but we are adjourned at 7:48.